Ready, are you ready for it? Welcome. We will call this Board of Weber County Commissioners to order dated this 21st day of November 2017, 10 o'clock AM. In attendance today are Commissioner Gibson, Commissioner Harvey, and myself, Commissioner Ebert. We wish to say welcome to everyone here. Glad to see all your smiling faces. We like to see our community engagement. We'll start this meeting with the invocation by Zachary Dam. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Rhonda Kippen, and the thought of the day I will give to Commissioner Ebert. Zachary, start us out.
Let us pray. Father, I thank you for this day, for gathering us here, Lord, and I thank you for this time of year when we can pause and remember all the blessings that you give to us over the past year, and I thank you for the blessing of a free country where we can elect our leaders and make our own decisions instead of having them dictated to us. And I pray that today you would help our county commissioners as they make decisions to have wisdom and to be judicious in how they deal with the matters before the county, and I pray, Lord, that you would help us to have a peaceful and happy place here to live, and it is in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Zachary and Rhonda. So, a quick thought on civility within our communities but also within politics, it's always a good reminder. Americans of every party and ideology need to return to debating the merits of different worldviews in elevated, respectful, and honest terms. This is much easier said than done. The most debated political issue sometimes touch on fundamental beliefs which make it easy to stop listening, put up walls, and respond by resorting to insults. But seeking to understand an opposing viewpoint does not require that one compromise his or her beliefs and principles. In fact, as we really come to understand the reasoning behind an opposing viewpoint, it strengthens our convictions and improves one's ability to defend his or her position, or at times, you change what your thought process is. In addition, and almost as importantly, listening to understand allows us to see our opponents as human beings rather than just political foes. Humanizing our opponents removes the desire to attack and debate, and allows us to gain a desire to help him or her understand that there is another side of the issue. It is much harder to debate in a civil manner than it is to debate an insult. It requires a firm understanding and belief in one's political viewpoint to the point that when attacked, you can defend on the merits of the issue. Although an elevated debate requires a greater effort, it is much more rewarding, and in the process of understanding, explaining, and debating, we strengthen our own convictions, improve our ability to defend our own views, and we just might forge a relationship with someone that allows, excuse me, that we are told by politics to hate. As a society, we don't have to agree on everything, nor should we. However, let's make sure that our disagreements are respectful and based on the merits of an issue, rather than weakness of those whom we disagree with. Elevating our discussion will allow us to achieve results that are impossible when we refuse to listen to anyone who has a different ideology or viewpoint, and it can begin right here in Weber County. Thank you for letting me give you my thought for the day. We'll now move into our presentations. We will start with a presentation of Weber State Political Science Department on the results of a semester-long special project on improvements to the election process in Utah, Dr. Gary Johnson. Come on up, sir, and bring those that you would like to help with your presentation forward. Please introduce yourself and anyone who may be with you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to introduce the students in my class. We have three presenters today, and they'll give us about a 15-minute presentation. We've been cooperating with the county elections office, and I'd like to thank, and I know the students will want to thank as well, Jessica Hastings and Ryan for helping us out so much all semester. We started on this project in the summer, and I met with them several times, and we've had a great group of students who've worked very hard for the last couple of months to do an original survey, original database, and talk about legislation in the Utah House of Representatives and in the Senate on election reforms and issues related to improving efficiency and cost for county elections. So I'm going to turn it over to Cambria, Jean, and Marcus, and they will present this data for us.
Hi. I would just like to start off by thanking you for inviting us to come present in front of you today. My name's Cambria, and presenting with me are my classmates, Jean and Mark- and Marcus. So this is, again, a presentation we've been working on all semester. We work directly with Jessica Hastings and Ryan Crowley. So a special thank you to them, especially Jessica, who's come into our classroom multiple times, worked with us directly. That was a big help to us. We would also like to thank the Weber County Elections Office. They invited us to come look at how they do their elections, how they check for voter fraud, they let us look at their machines, and just how everything's run here in Weber, and that was also really helpful to us. So, this is Dr. Gary Johnson's Political Science 3760 class. This is a state and local government class at Weber State University. It is an upper-division course, and it is also a Ccel course, meaning that it's a Center for Community Engaged Learning. So this means that we focus on democratic engagement, civic engagement, participation here in Weber County, which is really important to us at Weber State. So, if we could just go to the next slide. So what we did is we conducted an original survey of the 29 county clerks across Utah. Of these 29 surveys, we got 18 responses. In combining this data, we got quantitative and qualitative data responses. So with that, we were able to assess the current similarities and differences across Utah and compare that to other states in America, and we combined this with bill analysis, and we did an extensive literature review, and that is where we got our data from. So we can looked into six different states, or five different states. We looked at Oregon, Massachusetts, Alabama, and Ohio. So we looked at these states for their wealth, for their lack thereof, if they were innovators in their election reforms in their states, and if there was a lot of literature about them. Ohio was a swing state. It was in this past 2016 election, so that was beneficial for us as we were comparing the different states. So what we looked at, as we were looking at these states, as you can see, was online registration, what the requirements were for identification, when you could register, what their convicted felon voting procedures was, what their early voting procedures were, and if they did allow absentee voting or not, early voting, everything like that. So I'll hand it off to Jean.
Thank you. In addition to our bill analysis and our survey that we sent out to the county clerks, we also compiled a comprehensive literature review on the nature of voting reforms within the whole United States. We found some interesting things. So, our first point was that vote by mail actually does increase voter turnout, especially in the age, in the sector of ages from 26 to 64. However, there are some differences there as well. So, for example, it does also increase costs for conducting elections. However, a very interesting find from the literature review was that this increase in cost is offset by voter turnout. So, since voter turnout increases, the cost per ballot by mail actually decreases. So it has this sort of effect in the long run of actually decreasing costs, potentially. Another study found that, and this is for vote by mail, when counties pay for postage, that doesn't actually affect anything. So, the argument that this could put additional strains on counties for paying for postage sort of doesn't have an effect on voter turnout. Also, we took a look at early voting procedures. We found that the literature supports that early voting does provide more positive turnout for voter, for voters, and because it eliminates the need to actually go to a voting poll or a specific location for that. And we also took a look at centralization and uniformity within counties that conduct elections, and we found that centralization does eliminate a lot of problems that are present because of party-run elections, such as gerrymandering. So, a desire for uniformity may eliminate some problems that we have seen in elections on the county level. Next slide, please. So, for the bill analysis, we took a comprehensive look at bills passed in the Utah State Legislature from 2010 to 2017. We analyzed the total of 19 bills quite in detail. So what we found was that a lot of these bills that dealt with voting reform, they actually tend to make minute changes within voting procedures within Utah. And some bills that were directed towards voter registration were also introduced. However, bills that introduce radical changes to voting within the Utah, voting procedures tend not to get passed. Two examples of this would be HB 349, so that was ranked choice voting. It first proposed in 2016 and then done again in 2017. Those measures have not passed the House at all. As well as voting and voter registration amendments, HB 244, which would have required more strict regulations on what type of ID voters could bring in order to prove their citizenship. So, these bills tend not to pass the House. However, bills that introduce minor voting, changes to voting procedures within the House, they do, those do tend to pass. An example of this would be HB 16 Voting Revisions, which was passed in 2016, brought various slight changes to the way that elections are conducted within Utah. One interesting finding within our study is that Utah has been central to some new projects, so an example of this would be the Internet Voting Pilot Project. That is SB 245, and it was introduced in 2014, which allowed military members deployed overseas to vote during elections through the Internet. And even though that was only passed for military members deployed overseas, there have been efforts to try to introduce this type of legislature on voters of Utah. So, an example of this would be HB 410, which dealt with voting over the Internet during primaries. That measure has not passed yet, but this indicates that there is this desire to introduce new types of systems in voting. And bills that deal with security standards, or rather introduce a uniformity to security standards across counties, have passed as well. Example, HB 95, which passed in 2010, dealt with the central certification of voting equipment within Utah. Those measures tend to pass. What this tells us is that the Utah State Legislature has a desire to introduce some sort of uniformity within voting procedures in Utah, especially when it comes down to security. And with all this, we can say that Utah has been proven to be a state that is willing to implement some pretty big changes in the way that voting is conducted. Next slide, please. So, now we're going to go a little bit more into detail about the survey that we conducted. This slide deals with voting equipment, so this goes back to the two bills that I was talking about, HB 95 and HB 16. Should all 29 counties in Utah be required to use the same voting equipment? Here, we have a preference, as we can see the counties have a preference towards yes, requiring the same equipment, and the no, the people, or rather, the county clerks that answered no, they, the reasons they cite is monetary concerns, so this will bring up quite a large financial burden on them, as well as having a desire to be autonomous in their elections from big government. So, they sort of want to have their own way into conducting elections. Next slide, please. Next one was looking at city and district contracts, and whether counties currently contract with cities and districts in order to run elections. Here, we found that half the counties do. So, the answers that we got on some elections and no elections, no elections means that during that year, there weren't any municipal-level elections being conducted, 2017, which is why we got that response. But this also indicates that cities do have a desire to contract within their counties. Now I'm going to pass it over to Marcus, who's going to go more into detail about the survey conducted.
Well, thank you again for having us here today. My name's Marcus Stevenson, and I'm going to walk through the rest of the maps we created. As Cambria and Jean both mentioned, we did survey, send a survey to the 29 county clerks. We did have 18 of those clerks respond, so I'm just going to walk you through some of these questions that we asked them, and exactly how they responded, and some of those implications that that may mean. Also, the first one we have here is how they conduct elections, and we simply asked, how does your county conduct elections? The options were by mail, traditionally, or a mix between the both of those. We can see here that traditionally, only three counties currently that responded currently do that, whereas 50% or eight of the counties do contact, conduct their elections by mail, and six counties do this as a combination of both. Vote by mail is fairly, a fairly new concept to the United States. There are only four states currently doing all vote by mail elections across the state. Those are California, Colorado, Oregon, and Washington. Utah and North Dakota are the only two states that allow each county to decide how they are going to conduct their elections. Other than that, if vote by mail is happening, it's for ballot initiatives, special elections or primaries, but not in the general election like we have here in Utah. We can go to the next slide, thank you. This next one is, does your county currently offer early voting? So some clear implications, we can see this, not only from looking at the map where we see a split of 50/50, but also from the county clerk's responses and their opinions of why they do not support, or why they do not have early voting, is because as vote by mail goes up, early voting is going down. They feel that it's redundant, that you don't need it if you do offer vote by mail. However, there are a few counties that do offer early voting and vote by mail, and those responses were just to give voters more options. And we can go on to the next slide. Okay, and same-day voter registration was our next one. Do you support same-day voter registration? So this map and my next one are all about the opinions of each county clerk, and so we can see here that 10 counties or nearly 60% do not support same-day voter registration, whereas seven counties do support same-day voter registration. This is still a highly debated topic in Utah and in the state legislature. In 2014, the Same-Day Voter Registration Pilot Project passed, and four counties, including Weber County, took place in this pilot program. The other three counties were Salt Lake, Davis, and Kane Counties. However, in 2017, in the general session, there was another bill, HB 285, to pass this statewide, and that did fail in the House Rules Committee. So clearly, we're still seeing this divide, it's still being debated. These clerks who said they were in favor of same-day voter registration, all of them said that it would highly help their provisional balloting process to help keep things more up-to-date that way, and those who were against it said that it, they just felt it would be too hard to understand and know how, what kind of turnout they would receive on the same day, and planning for that would be quite difficult, and that voters should take responsibility to register before the election and not wait until that last minute. Next slide, please. Okay, this is our last map of automatic voter registration, and so, again, another opinion question on, do you support automatic registration? This one is where we were really surprised, with 13 counties or nearly 77% saying that they do support automatic voter registration, and only four saying that they do not. The reasoning behind this is that those county clerks said that they believe every eligible voter should be voting, and that it would really help the accuracy within their records, that anytime anybody moved into the state or moved out of the state, the more often that that's getting updated and automatically tracked, the better. And those who were against it said so because they felt that citizens should opt into voting. So, automatic voting is fairly new to the United States, but many states have started to participate in this. There's Alaska, California, Connecticut, Oregon, Vermont, West Virginia, and the District of Columbia, and many of these give the opt-out option that could satisfy some of those concerns of the county clerks who were against automatic voter registration in this scenario. So with that, that is the maps that we created with many of the questions that we asked. I'm going to hand it back to Cambria to give our conclusions. Thank you.
Awesome. If you can go to the next slide, thank you. So, there is a great deal of electoral reform going on across America, and Utah is no exception. So the survey we conducted, while it was an, albeit, small survey size, it was really beneficial to us and our research, and even though our findings may not be advisable to the rest of the country, they are really pertinent to Utah, especially concerning election reforms. So based on our data, there is a strong preference for vote by mail here in Utah. Along with vote by mail, there's a strong preference for uniformity, although the, some of the county clerks did express monetary concerns for that. So we did look at a total of 19 bills that were explicitly related to our research from 2010 to 2017. So a lot of these bills dealt with minor changes, as Jean pointed out, and they were to simplify voting processes and increase efficiency. So by and large, efficiency means cost-effectiveness. In contrast with the academic literature that we looked at, the county clerks in Utah weren't so concerned with voter turnout as they were with cost efficiency and administrative processes. So one example to decrease cost efficiency that we find to be, a lot of the county clerks in Utah show a strong favor for this, would be automatic voter registration. There is a 74% of the county clerks were in favor of automatic voter registration, and this was one of the most robust findings in our data, and automatic voter registration does three things. So it saves cost, it is more efficient, it's more accurate, and it has good security associated with it. So that concludes our data that we have to present for you today, and we now will have any questions that you guys have.
Questions, Commissioners? I've got a couple of questions, if no one else has questions. Commissioner Harvey, you look like you're...
There's just a lot of awesome information here. Did you do any, I'm just curious, was there any information or did you take it further where people could use an electronic device to vote? For instance, everybody has a cellphone now, and to make that even easier or less expensive, you said that there wasn't really a cost associated, whether the county provided the stamp, or if the individual provided the stamp, or there wasn't any, there wasn't really a difference in the amount of people who voted, whether, who pays for the stamp? I found that to be interesting. But to even make that simpler for those, has there, has there, did you look into a device?
So we didn't look into devices, but from the literature that we looked at, I, my biggest concern with that is that most people would be concerned with security.
Right.
So we looked a lot at like vote by mail, and people were concerned with security just by that, for like undue influence, or even, people seemed to have a lot of concerns about security, even though there's like really insignificant findings that there would be any show for security. I know that Jean looked at a bill for Internet, so I don't know if he has more to say.
Yes, I do. So, one of the things associated with that, as Cambria mentioned, is security. Utah has proven to be sort of a catalyst for, I, I can't say proven exactly, but it's been central to Internet voting. Utah is one of the first states to actually implement Internet voting for military members overseas as well. So, in that sense, we do see a desire to move on to more electronic voting standards. However, there is nothing yet so far as for, there is no central authentication for that. So whether it would be, you know, biometric data that you would use to verify that it is you who is indeed voting, or something else, we have no data to actually look into that. But the biggest concern with that would be exactly who's voting at the end of that electronic device.
I am, I am very encouraged with the, our Elections Department by their efficiencies and the security by which they conduct elections. I was really, really happy when I learned all the details of what they do. I felt it like, I felt that our elections are very secure, and I have, I have a great deal of confidence in the way they conduct business.
Yes, and our, the literature review and our findings support that statement as well.
Awesome. A couple of quick questions. There's a big difference between rural and urban. Were you able to account for those differences as you kind of looked through your findings, or was there anything within your findings that really caused you any concern dealing with the different aspects of our counties?
So as far as urban and rural, unfortunately, many of our rural counties did not respond to the survey, so we do have limited data on that aspect. But cost is really what came into concern with these rural counties. That was a finding that we had, that it was, it was cost. With early voting, they, or same-day voter registration, they were worried that they would have to set up many more polling locations, and they wouldn't have the return for the investment that they were making. In that, what was the second part of your question?
Well, just, again, the question was, maybe your urban, your urban counties, maybe the citizens would be a little more interactive with a vote by mail, where your rural may not feel as comfortable, or vice versa. In the process of collecting your data, was there anything that would have led you or to be concerned with how the data was being collected between those two different county geographic and demographic?
I don't, I don't feel concerned with that, but again, we just have the lack of information with not as many rural counties responding.
So I noticed, I was just looking at Iron County, they responded to some but not the others. Did they kind of tell you why they responded? Did you have any contact?
They did not. There were a number of counties that would respond to one or not others, but we didn't have a reason, we were not given a reason for.
Right. Utah County voted no on everything. Any particular reason?
I think we all know the answer to that.
Yeah, yeah. No, no particular, yeah, we didn't ask them specifically why that was the case, but you definitely see a trend among these. If they were supporting some things, they were likely supporting the others and vice versa, but there are, are some that would switch it up as well.
Okay. Last question really quickly. Jean talked on centralization. What, what are you, what is your definition, your reference when you talk about centralization, just for those who may not?
Well, by centralization, we mean bringing uniformity into the way that all counties conduct elections within Utah. So, it's sort of this debate about whether we give coun- counties more autonomy to conduct elections versus the state telling them how to, how to run their elections. What we find is that when you have a more centralized, uniform system, it does eliminate some problems that we've seen with, with some party problems that we've seen in terms of voting, and it does increase efficiency, at least what our literature points out. But there is this problem of creating, or giving counties autonomy, or rather, taking it away from them.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Dr. Johnson.
Can I ask a quick question? Did you do any work on, on primary voting? And in other words, the, all this debate on Senate Bill 54 and, and the caucus system versus the, the direct primary route, any of that kind of stuff?
Only the, only in detail, the bills that I looked about that dealt with voting on primaries was for the Internet Pilot Project. That would be, would have allowed primaries to conduct their elections over the Internet. However, we haven't split those, we haven't looked at those types of voting more in detail, unfortunately.
Interesting. It just seems like that might be some of the most significant election legislation to pass in the last, gosh, you know how many years. It might be something interesting to look at in the future, but appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for letting them present today, and for your excellent questions.
Thanks for your leadership and teaching. That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Amazing job. Rest of your team back there?
Yep.
Let's give them a hand.
Give them a hand, thank you. Very much. We appreciate it. Really quickly, if you don't mind...
Very much. We appreciate it. Uh, really quickly, uh, if you don't mind, uh, I'm gonna have Commissioner Harvey go through F. the consent items. I gotta step out just for one moment.
Folks, folks, this where it gets really interesting. I can't mark you're leaving with your satchel. What?
Under consent items, item F. in our agenda. Request for approval of warrants number one-two-six-two to one-two-seven-one and four-two-two-eight-nine-five to four-three-one-two-nine in the amount of one million nine hundred twenty-three thousand and thirty-three dollars and one cent. Item two, request for approv- approval of purchase orders in the amount of forty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six and fifty-two cents. Item three, request, request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on November seventh and fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Item four, request for approval of a new business license. Item five, request re- that is a tough word. Request for approval to declare part of parcel number fifteen dash zero-seven-six dash zero-zero-four-nine as surplus property. Item six, request from the Weber County Library for approval to surplus a postage machine. And item seven, request for approval to set the date of November twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen at six P. M. for a public hearing to receive public comments on the two thousand eighteen Weber County tentative budget. Any questions? Mr. Gibson?
Nope, not for me.
Mr. Hatch?
That was a great presentation. That was, election geeks were rejoicing as we, uh, looked at this, so. Uh, and very difficult for someone who's not familiar with elections to have to dig deep and, and understand a lot of the things that, after doing it for years, you, you understand it. Okay, nine purchase orders for, uh, forty-nine thousand dollars this week. Uh, half of that amount, or twenty-five thousand dollars, was for the library, and that was for software renewals. Twenty-six percent or thirteen thousand dollars was for homeland security, and that went primarily towards, uh, dental x-ray software. Eighteen percent or nine thousand dollars was for the gun range, and that was for asphalt repairs. We wrote two hundred forty-five checks this week, this week for, uh, one-point-nine million dollars. Thirty-seven percent of them, that amount, or seven hundred fourteen thousand dollars was employee medical and dental insurance. Ten percent or a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars went to the paramedic fund, uh, the monthly payment to that fund. Ten percent or a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars was escrow releases, um, for Ski Lake and Henry Flats. Nine percent or a hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars was the human services monthly payment. Six percent, we had two, uh, payments for, at a hundred-and-ten, hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. One was for the library, and that was for books and materials, and the other was to pay our public defenders. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. I appreciate that. Uh, if there's any other questions, I'll accept a motion.
All moved, seconded.
Recognized and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Ebert, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Harvey. Uh, we'll move to G. Action items. Uh, one, under G is your request for approval to sell surplus real property parcel numbers zero-four dash zero-four-four dash zero-zero-one-seven and zero-four dash zero-zero dash zero-zero-one-eight. Mr. Kevin MacLeod, great to see you.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's good to be here with you. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to review the documents that, uh, Director Wilkinson, uh, sent to you in regards to this sale of property. The surplus process has been completed, and, uh, we're recommending that the, the property be sold to the New Zion Baptist Church.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. MacLeod? No questions. I'm open for a motion.
I'll move that we, uh, approve to sell the surplus real property parcel zero-four-zero-four-four dash zero-zero-one-seven and zero-four-zero-four-four zero-zero-one-eight.
I'll second. I'll sorry.
I have a motion.
Kevin, is that, that's an adjacent property owner, right?
They are. They are. They're adjacent property owners. These are two lots attached to that property.
Perfect.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any polls? It passes. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a great day. Item number two, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Spikers High School Rodeo Association to hold the Spikers High School Rodeo at the Golden Spike Event Center. Mr. Duncan Olson?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Duncan.
Um, this is pretty much our standard contract that we've had with the Spikers. We're super excited to have them back. Um, we're starting to feel like we're their home and love to support the, the local rodeo team.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Olson?
We are their home, and, uh, I think this, this is one of those great homegrown things that, uh, shows good partnership, I think, with our hometown university, and, uh, continues, I think, as well to, uh, build on our heritage and culture that, that we care about so much. So I, I'm, I think this is a great one. The contract looks good. I'll make a motion that we approve this contract.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any polls? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number three, discuss- discussion and/or action on our request for final approval of Fall Widow Subdivision Phase Two, including the acceptance of a one-year warranty bond in the amount of four thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Rhonda Kippen?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Rhonda.
I'd like to come see you more often, but...
We'd like it if you did, too.
I know. I think I'm just gonna start making up applications that I can see ya. So, now, this one should not be any drama, and she goes smooth as butter.
Do we ever have drama, Rod?
Well, I, there's been a rumor that sometimes mine are, and so it's only gonna be dramatic if you guys make it dramatic, okay? Um, so the, uh, item up for, uh, discussion and approval hopefully today is Fall Widow Subdivision Phase Two. Uh, Commissioner Gibson and Ebert are familiar with this one, Commissioner Harvey. Uh, this one, uh, actually came before the commission prior to you being on board, so I'll give a brief synopsis of, of what took place. Um, uh, basically, the applicant was asking for a seven-lot subdivision at an end of a very long, uh, dead-end road. It was actually four thousand seven hundred and ninety-six feet. And so it, it weigh, it went way over our block length requirements, and so we, we told him he needed to stub to the east and the west of the property, uh, to, to make a block length along for, seventy-nine hundred west. And, um, he'd already done one, but he'd just done a future easement, and it wasn't a dedicated road, and so the house had actually built right up to that easement. We weren't doing any si- setbacks from that easement. And so, uh, the Planning Commission recommended that he stubbed the roads all the way to the east and west and to the north of, of these, of this subdivision, uh, meaning all improvements put in, and, and it was a significant amount of property going both directions. And so he appealed, he wanted to appeal it, but he missed his appeal date. So he changed his, um, request to five lots, and, um, just to open up the discussion again, they made the same recommendations so we could get it to the County Commission. And at that time, he appealed the decision to stub the roadways to the east and the west. And, uh, the direction we received from the commission was to get back with the attorneys, engineers, see if we could figure out some way, um, because basically it was a financial burden. Uh, you know, it wasn't that we were dealing with topography or anything. It was just a financial burden for this, uh, developer to do that. And so, uh, what we ended up doing, it took months, months and months. Yeah, and I don't, I don't think this is up, so I'll actually have you just reference unless they can ramp. So, uh, what we ended up doing is, as, with our discussions with the attorney's office and with, um, the engineering's office, we were able to go through some state statutes and find that it was actually considered an exaction, because I, I was able to have the applicant bring forward, uh, the costs of his development without the stubbing of the roads and the cost with stubbing of the roads, and it was twice as much. And so based on that, oh, no, you're good. Um, based on that, it was found that the improvements were not roughly proportionate when compared to the cost of the exaction and the public expense to address the impact such as, such a variation or exception, uh, can be made by the county. So based on that, we were able to make a finding that it was ru- not roughly proportionate, and, uh, so the County Commission was able to say, look, let's dedicate this property, but you do not need to put the improvements in. So, uh, and the applicant was totally fine with that. So we moved forward with a seven-lot subdivision. And so if you look at your Exhibit, um, A, that shows what the dedication, it's, uh, page five of the nineteen pages. Is that really nineteen pages? They're all kind of misnumbered. No, yeah. So, uh, if you look at page five, it, uh, shows the full dedication along the east and west of the property, so that at such time that the future, the neighboring properties want to come in and develop, they can put the improvements in and, and use that as frontage along their property. He was totally fine with that. We went back to the original plan, which was seven lots, and he was, he was pleased with that. And so that's kind of, all the drama has already gone through, and everybody's happy with that, and the Planning Commission was pleased with that decision also. So today, we are just looking for final approval and the acceptance of a one-year warranty bond in the amount of four thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. The applicant has already installed all of the improvements, including the, so the improvements are identified on page, um, seventeen, or actually, they should be, do I have them earlier? I have them on page six also. And basically, they are, um, the additional asphalt in front of lots eleven, ten, and nine. And then he's done a hammerhead, which was required by the fire department for safe turnaround. So that's the only asphalt that's gonna be on that dedicated, uh, northern line of his property. And so he's put in all the water system, storm drains, um, power lines, everything like that, fire hydrants, the water syst- the water, uh, provider has accepted the water lines and taken full ownership of that. The sewer systems, they will actually have to install a Wisconsin mound that will actually be part of their building permit on these lots. Uh, this property is located in A-two zone. We're looking at about twenty-six and a half acre lots, or it's twenty-six and a half acre project area, and each lot is, is approximately two acres. And so, um, there's very limited activities that can take place on this, on this size of property. Uh, most of the, the prop- all, all the other uses fall into either a two-acre or a five-acre. So there's very limited uses that are allowed in the two, to having two acres, but most of it is in the five acres. So, um, single-family dwelling had to have forty thousand square feet. Um, so the, uh, Planning Commission recommended approval on October tenth, two thousand seventeen, and, uh, we've got the Mylar in, got everybody's signature on it. Um, uh, this is located in the flood zone Z, which is basically the best one you can be located in, and the area that's being built on is up, is above the elevation of four thousand two hundred and fifteen feet. The reason why that's important is based on the el- lake's elevation at, um, in the nineteen eighty-six lake, lake level was four thousand two hundred and twelve, and then we have the three-feet, uh, wave length. So if there's a hurricane during a high-flood year, uh, that's what the, the, how far the wa- wave could, wave action could be. And so, uh, we've addressed those things. We've got the street blo- streak and block standards addressed. Um, all of the improvements are in with the exception of the chip sill. So we're collecting a hundred and ten percent on the chip sill. We're collecting ten percent on the asphalt, and that is all that we are bonding for one year. And so if, we've done, um, samples on, core samples on the asphalt, and, uh, everything is checked out perfect. So he is, he is really ready to go and start selling the lots. All of the lots meet the two-acre, uh, they, they are only required to have forty thousand square feet, but they are all two-acre plus. Um, none of, none of them are over five acres, um, that would qualify them for more permitted uses and conditional uses. Um, but they all have adequate width, which is a hundred and fifty feet, and, um, they will all gain access off of seventy-nine hundred west. Um, uh, there's no geologic hazard area out there. Um, and trying to think of anything else that may be applicable. All review agencies have, uh, unanimously approved these, signed the Mylar, and, uh, so basically, the Weber County Planning Commission, as long as the planning department, recommends final approval of the Fall Widow Subdivision Phase Two, consisting of seven lots. This recommendation for approval includes the County Commission's acceptance of a one-year warranty bond in the amount of four thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, and is subject to all review agencies' requirements and based on the following findings. The proposed subdivision conforms to the Western Weber General Plan. With their recommen- recommendations, the proposed subdivision complies with the applicable county ordinances. The literal enforcement of the standards to install all improvements with the dedication roadway is not roughly proportionate when compared to the cost of the exaction and the public expense to address the impact. Any questions? Wow. That's it. See, I wanted to give you guys one easy one. I didn't, I was like, okay, let's just do, I'll do one.
I don't think it's necessarily been easy, because it's taken a long time to get here, hasn't it?
It's taken a couple of years. But yeah, it's taken a couple of years to get us here. Um, it has been a rough one to go through, but, uh, we got it here, and it's neat and tidy and buttoned up to where I, this is just a nice pers- pretty Christmas present, I think, so we get it done.
All right. Go ahead.
While you find a way to, found a way to make this work, I'm, I'm, I've heard that there are a couple of other subdivisions that will be coming forward that have the same type of, uh, really long roads leading up to the subdivisions, and just, I just wanna make sure that we're prepared to treat everybody consistently. And so we've learned a lot through this process. I appreciate the fact that this is facilitated now. Uh, so we're, we're protected, you, you feel really comfortable in moving forward, that we're not sending any kind of especial precedence, but everything's really good.
Yes, yes, I do. And, you know, and that's, that, that was what was frustrating, as I did, because this applicant had actually developed the majority of seventy-nine hundred west, but he was doing it at one or two lots, or two or three lot subdivisions. And so they just kept kicking it down, kicking the can down the road. And so, because it was only two lots, or it was only three lots, and why make them build a road because it's only two or three lots? And, and so, you know, finally, at bar- when he got to the Barbara Platts, they made him do this easement, that the easement really wasn't binding, there's no dedication there. This dedication goes over to Weber County. Weber County now owns that, that roadway. And so, and whether Weber County just decides to go in and put the improvements in, or we wait till the property owners to the north goes in, and then we work with the applicants to put it in, you know, whatever we decide to do there. But that is something that we are consciously watching. We are measuring block lengths and, uh, making sure that they fall within, uh, no more than, or no less than six hundred, it has to be six hundred feet and no more than thirteen hundred feet, uh, for a block length. So, you know, we've, we've heard the magical number is, is between six and eight hundred feet, uh, for block length. So anyway, so it's something that we are watching and analyzing in all of these developments.
Rhonda, one of the things for me is that, uh, one of the challenges, I think, over the years has been that, um, obviously, we have to be, and, and we strive to be fair and, and appropriate. As Commissioner Harvey mentioned, we wanna make sure that there's, that everybody is treated appropriately. But by the same token, every now and then you just see one of the, you see something that just, you just scratch your head and say, this just doesn't make sense.
Right.
Right? What we're asking, or, or whatever, just doesn't make sense. And, and, and so we have to be nimble enough to figure out what might we be doing wrong, or what, what are we missing, or, or whatever. Because that, people can see when the common sense goes out the window and...
Yeah.
And it, and it's frustrating.
It is frustrating.
It becomes the knock on government, that we, that we're so worried about a procedure that we can't, we can't react
Right.
to, to anything around us. And to me, this is one of those examples of figuring it out, of recognizing, okay, that something just isn't right here, and figuring it out and coming up with the right solution. And in the end, we do have a very nice, tidy, as you described, a package that works well and fits well, but it took some creativity to figure it out.
It did.
And so,
It really did.
I want to compliment you on your ability and willingness to do that, because I think that speaks for, for you and the department, and
Thank you.
I think, I think we have a good resolution here. I'm grateful for it.
Thank you, thank you. And, and it's been helpful as we've gone forward with other developments. We're like, this is a good block length, we need to install one. And you know, there was one that was right on a section line. It made more sense to have the road split the section line. And so, you know, and it was a five lot subdivision. Does that make sense for him to dedicate another road going to somebody else's property right there? No, he says, "They have access over here, they can get to it." But we made him dedicate a half width, and then the developer on the other side dedicated a half width, and now we've got sixty-six foot right of way going down in there. And so, it's really helpful when we can start implementing the code the way it should be, and then you can point back to those successful areas. And so, it's, you know, so we're setting a good precedence moving forward.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll move that we approve Fall Widow subdivision phase two, including acceptance of a one-year warranty bond in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes to pass? Thank you very much, Rhonda.
Perfect, thank you so much. You guys have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too. Same to you. We'll move to item number four, request for approval of Western Weber Park District, two thousand eighteen, tax rate, Dwayne Hanson. Mr. Hanson, please come on up. See, you're holding your favorite poster there.
I am. I am, Dwayne Hanson from Taylor. Appreciate opportunity to speak with you today. I know a couple of the commissioners, Commissioner Ebert, pleasure to meet you. I have to put on hat A for just a second and tell you about this. I don't, you've seen this, the Hoff, the Thirty-Second Annual Sneddon Hoff Festival taking place, and it's third week in January, and you were all invited. In fact, that, it takes place because of you. We appreciate that. And on the evening of the nineteenth, there'll be a little special time for you there, so.
But when we had a Hoff festival for years, is the Hoff festival close to the Hoff festival?
It is close, yeah, yeah.
I don't think either of them are right.
Commissioner Harvey, you've been there, how do you say it then?
Hoff. And it's, Commissioner Ebert, though, loves Guam and Ghana. He thinks they're in the same region, so that's okay.
There you go.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for putting up with our
It's too bad you didn't have Commissioner, too bad you didn't have Commissioner Ebert in your class, Mr. Hanson.
Yeah. There we go, keep him.
But he does have a German name.
And I do have a son in Germany on a mission.
Which mission?
So, there's some connection.
Might I ask?
Aspen, excuse me, Alpine, German speaking.
The Alpine, so he's in Austria and Southern Germany. That's outstanding. They don't really speak German down there, they speak Baye Deutsch, but that's okay.
They speak all kinds of different German dialects down there.
They do. Commissioners, I am representing the Western Weber Parks District at this time. I'm, I serve right now as the treasurer, and we had the privilege of meeting with the public last night in a, in a public meeting. And then, following that public meeting, there was a public hearing, and we took information from the public. And that's, we're new enough that we learned a lot. I'll just add that to what we've done and what we, what we spoke with, with people last night. And this year, by the vote, by a vote, we have established this, this district, and we, after meeting last night, the board voted to establish a tax. The tax, the exact tax rate, John or Roger, I don't Three-two-five. I had three-seven-five, three-two-five, thank you so much, is the exact rate. Thank you so much. Some of, there have been some expenses that have been incurred already. With that tax, we would pay those, but most of the, most of the money that would be collected from this tax would be for capital expenses as we go forward. And so, current law would require that, after, even though we passed that last night as a board, that we bring that to you, and that the commission ratify this tax, if I'm understanding that correctly. And so, I bring this to you now and ask that, the tax governing the Western Weber Tax District, and I'm sure that you have the
Questions, commissioners? Brian, there's some process, I think, that we've been made aware of, and options. If you don't have any questions to start with, maybe Brian can go over a couple of things? Is that okay?
Sure. So, under the current statute, commissioners, there are really only two options available. Because this district has a board that's appointed, they cannot approve the tax themselves. They can go through the truth and taxation process, but at the end of the process, the tax rate has to be approved either by the appointing authority, which is the county, or by the voters in next year's general election. There has been a change made to the statute by the legislature this year. It does not go into effect until January first, but that new statute would, it will provide boards with, boards that are appointed, with the authority to approve their own tax rate. And so, at this time, they only have the two options, either the county approves the tax rate, or the voters do. As of January first, they'll have the authority to do it themselves.
The challenge, I was just going to say, sorry, Commissioner
Good, go, go.
The challenge with that is that the statute also requires for, for the district to have a budget pass, to have this process take place during this year and have a budget passed, if they want to collect tax revenue. Well, no, sorry, they, the budget has to be passed in the 2018 calendar year, which is part of this resolution. And so, if, if they didn't have the tax rate ratified until next year, into next year, then that would not reflect a budget that they could pass for next year, because it would be passed in the next year. So, so that becomes the challenge. The legislature kind of has put us in a conundrum here. I'm not sure why or how this all happened, but here, here's my thoughts on the issue, since I've got the floor, I'll just express them. I, I don't know, it is a little awkward, I think, for this body, the county commission, to have to meddle in the, in the affairs of, of a local district. But I also understand that, that I think, one of the principles that I've tried to live by and work by is that we want to allow government to function as appropriately as possible, at the lowest level possible. At the, and, and in this particular case, I think what we have here is we have a, a district that has been created by the voice of the people through an election that was just held a couple of months ago. That was, the budget process for that was then publicly noticed and put forward as a, as per statute, with, with good thorough, robust discussion, and the appointed members of that board, in which I am one, took that up after the meeting and, and made a decision to, to forward this to the county commission. I think it's appropriate and the right thing to do for the commission to, to recognize that process, not only the election, but the, the appointment of those board members and the decision made after the statutory requirements were held, were made as far as that Right, it would allow us to go forward with what we need to do to, to create information as well as planning and budgeting and so forth with, if this goes forward, so.
And I think one of the things that I enjoyed last night, as you mentioned, Dwayne, is what a, I mean, opinions all over the board, right? But I think a lot of them focused on this great experiment of, of local governance, right? And people saying a lot of things like, "Gosh, what kind of, what kind of parks could we have, and what kind of, you know, what are, what are the options, and where might they be?" And I'm excited about that opportunity in a community like that, where they don't have a municipal government. We serve as the, as the representatives for them, but, but they don't have a municipal government, and so, I, it's a great experiment for them to learn how to govern themselves.
We learned a lot last night.
We all learned.
And anytime you say tax increase or levying a tax, there are folks that come, and they're against any tax. But then, the evening itself was not only a learning process, it was very productive. Most of the folks, by the end of that meeting, seeing what we had in mind, were enlightened and want, just wanting more information. That, if there was a concern, the greatest concern that came out of the meeting was they wanted to know more, especially if we're going to spend money. They wanted to have more pieces, and we're all about that, but we need to move forward.
I just want to compliment you, Dwayne. I think you've done a great job of, of understanding and learning this process and representing these people, and, and I, I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for your first item of business, Dwayne, that Hoff Fest. Perfect. I also want to commend Mr. Brunker, Mr. Bond, Mr. Heslop. I see you're here, welcome here.
That's Mr. Fowers.
Fowers, excuse me. Sorry.
They're all related, though.
I'm sorry. Mr. Fowers, for attending last night, and, and I appreciate that above and beyond. You two, Dwayne, that was just great, and with you and Jimmy and, and Mr. Renew there was, it was great to see people who wanted a genuine outcome for the betterment of their community to, to what's left behind. My concern this morning is just the same as what it was last night. I felt like most people, they, they need money to continue or start where you're headed. I think the concern for me is, where is that money going to be spent? And if you could comment to me right now, because I only heard the word, just a few different things, but I, I haven't, there's not a copy of the budget here in our packet, and so, I would, before I approve, for me, before my position votes for that, I'd love budgets, and so, I'd love to see how it's spent. Can you tell us anything, Dwayne, on the, with regards to the budget?
We, we're truly building from, from scratch right now, from grassroots. The things that we envision right now would be finding, and there may be costs in dealing with that, in finding those who would be able to help us as engineers, or contractors, or even legal advice, those that would, that's one of the expenditures that we foresee. In the capital monies, we're not sure where the, the ground would come for, for a park right now, and that was frustrating to the folks last night, some of them anyway. And, and to us as a board, we're beginning, we do not know. We're right in the process of deciding and asking and looking whether we're going to have that donated, or whether we use some other form, or whether we end up buying a piece of property. So, that money very well could go into a, a holding fund and carried over, that we look for a piece of property that we start with a park in, in that Western Weber County area.
It was encouraging, though, because last night, there was discussion based on, you did come to the, or, or the board, the park district members, or board trustees, members, whatever their title, that they came to the figure of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
So, what, how did you, how did you come to that? Help me understand that.
That, that came from the tax rate versus, used against the taxable amount in the areas that we're talking about, so mainly Taylor, West Weber, and Warren areas.
Help?
Maybe I can explain that while he's coming up. Commissioner, the, the, one of the things that, that I think this board tried to do is pattern after a successful neighboring district, the West Warren Park District. And so, the rate is very, very similar. In fact, it's as close as we could get with, you know, to figure the, all the, you know, that type of stuff, the, the rates and the way that they all plug into the system. You can't, John can explain that better, but you can't get it exactly, for whatever reason. And so, the idea is that, that it's, it's an acceptable number, something that, that has been shown in a, in a successful district next door, to be something that, that meets those needs. Now, the, the challenge here with this particular district is that it's, it's new, and so, there's capital needs that there aren't necessarily in the other district. And so, that's why the budget was set up simply with two, two line items. One is to reimburse the county for the cost that, that the county has, has forwarded for this district. Right now, that's at about forty-five hundred dollars. That includes the service and the, the postage and mailing for the public hearing. And on top of that, the, the only other line item in the budget is, is a capital expenditure line item. And, and while every detail of a capital expenditure line item isn't lined out, can't be lined out, and especially in this case, we have to figure out, because we're, we're hoping to have some land donation, but we don't know that. There's, there's probably no discussion, or no disagreement, that, that we're several years away from being able to, you know, at this rate, from being able to do something significant from a capital repurchase perspective. And so, we're, we're trying to build into that capital investment line item, something that will allow for the purchase of, of property and/or the building on that property if it's donated. So, that's what the line is on the budget.
Okay. Mr. Bond?
Maybe just two comments. I don't think I need, I could explain it differently than what Commissioner Gibson did. In designing the footprint out there, commissioner discussion prior to this was to look at all the unincorporated area currently, that doesn't have a park area, and put that into that, into this model. So, all the unincorporated area that buffers all the incorporated cities, Far West, Plain City, West Haven, Hooper, were all put into this district, less West Warren Park. So, I think that is an interesting point of reference to have. Three years ago, I tried to negotiate with the LDS Church to consider having them, in these discussions, possibly sell or donate the Warren Park. And at that time, they said, "Well, who would we donate, or give, or sell this park to?" And I said, "If we get to the point of having this unincorporated area designed as a park district, that is the entity that you would donate or negotiate with." And they said, "Well, until that is resolved, we are somewhat at a stalemate. We can't continue." So, that's another point of reference in this discussion, is to say, "Okay, could we then restart those negotiations with the LDS Church to see if the Warren Park could be considered as part of that first footprint, or that first park area for this park to consider? If not, if those negotiations don't work, then you would look at donations." Recently worked with the Upper Valley, and next to Liberty Park, they found donations to purchase the two lots or parcels that bring that park right out to the corner, and they were successful in getting donations for those two parcels. I have the dollar amount that they sold those parcels for, I don't know that in this setting it would be appropriate to outline that, the dollar amount, it was a lot of money, that was donated to get those two parcels. Would that happen in this area also? Those were parts of this discussion last night also, and so, how do you move forward? Get advice, buy that advice, look at other park areas, park districts that are in their maturity or infancy? So, there was a lot on the table discussed last night. It was really, it was a fascinating discussion to have, and all the viewpoints, but I don't know if that, to get to the budget, part of it, we advised them to look at other park districts that have, West Warren, for example. They put a lot of money in, their own sweat and their own donations to get their bounty and everything else, along with some of the tax money that's collected. But we did mirror almost identical to what the West Warren citizens or property owners are currently paying. So, there's probably three different pieces of information that might help outline a little bit. Further questions?
Just to help along with that, I think that is one of the things that was talked about during the election. I think that, that, that rate, or that contribution by West Warren residents was a, was an appropriate, an appropriate level, something that people were comfortable with, and I think that had And I think that had had something, some impact on the results of the election and the positive outcome of it. So I think that's just something to point out. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Commissioner.
I have a question for Mr. Brunker.
I have a sleeping question.
That's okay. I'm sorry to wake you up. The budget, if it were approved, the budget that would be submitted would have to show revenue side and it'd have to show an expense side, correct?
I don't deal with budgets necessarily, but my understanding is you can't set a budget without means to acquire funds for that budget.
So from what I've heard in today's discussion, that there would be a couple of line items, one for reimbursement, one for architectural contractor fees, and the rest of it goes into capital improvements.
Correct.
There's no maintenance fees, there's no other line items?
Not at this point.
So that's just kind of a work in progress.
And from my understanding, help me out with one more thing. I understand that we're required to formulate a budget and yet we can't formulate the budget without having money to spend in that budget. So it's another one of the things that we need to, and we've done a very best at coming to an acceptable rate that would give us, that wouldn't just be a token, it would actually be something that we could use and yet not be excessive.
If we were to approve, if we were to approve the budget today, then that would be submitted to the state and they would be required then to put a budget through. My understanding that you would have to put that expense side through, correct?
My understanding is yes.
Commissioners, can I just comment briefly on this concern of having the revenue side completed before the budget is done? I think that procedurally, yes, it makes sense that you've got the revenue side all completed before you pass the budget. However, legally, in the code, I can't find any requirements for that. The district has passed their final budget, whether the county approves the tax rate today or next month, or whether the district approves it in January. I don't see anything legally that would prevent either of those scenarios from going forward.
I'm interested in making sure that this district, because the voters voted to approve the district, moves forward. And I don't have any really objection to what they've come up with because, but I don't have, I don't have the cost side on the other side. What I would like to see is, I'd like to see the budget. I'd just like to see the budget. And so that's, my only concern is the budget. I voiced that last night. But I'd love to see the budget, but I'd love to see you move forward. And I do not want to delay this district from moving forward another year. So what, Brian, help me through that. So you're saying, you're saying, it's a, what do we, what, help me, just, can you understand what I'm trying to get at there?
Right. And I don't, I don't see whether the county approves it today, whether the county puts this off and approves it sometime in December, or whether the district itself, under its new statutory authority, approves the tax levy in January. I don't think under either scenario it would delay this out. I think that under any circumstance, they would be able to get their tax revenue in and they would be able to move forward with the budget that they have passed.
That's really important to me is that they're able to move forward.
Now, now, there is, there is this concern that has been raised about pushing it off until January and allowing the district to approve it themselves, that the revenue is not being approved until after the budget has been approved. And that's a procedural concern that's been raised, but I just can't find anything in the law that prohibits us from going that route.
And Roger, who I trust on all things budgets, has given me, I'm not going to read his eyes, but I think he, I think there are real concerns across the board. I don't understand the legal statement you just made, but I think that puts this district in a real, a real hairy situation, a scary situation of whether or not it would allow that to move forward, like you said, and so.
I'm okay as a commission body doing that, too. I think as a compromise for me, my thing today is I would, I would like to, and I'll make it as a form of a motion, that we table this discussion for a date later, but not later than the end of the year, that we table this discussion for, it would be the 12th or the 17th of December, 12th or 19th of December, that we come back and that your district has then a budget that could be submitted to the state, but we could at least see it so we know. And then we could have it published so people, everyone could see that.
Well, before I second the motion, I mean, I'm fine with whenever we do it, other than I also, I always hate to do things at the very last moment that they're possible. But I think it's important to remember that the budget has been approved. Roger, I mean, the reason, it's very simple and I, Roger read it, read it to us last night, but basically it is that, that capital expenditure line item plus the reimbursement.
That's it?
That's it. There was no item for consulting fees or anything like that. That's part of the, that's part of the capital improvement line item. So, so that's it. It's very simple. I mean, I can, we can get it to you in paper if that helps, but it's very, very simple. It's the reimbursement of the county, that's the budget, that's all there is to it, and the capital facility line item. And we have a final budget. Nothing is going to change on that in the next week or two. The only thing that would change is if we handed, if, you know, if you wanted to, if we wanted to hand you that copy, we could do that. So if you, if you're comfortable with that, we, I'm okay with seconding the motion, moving, moving that to later. But I just want you to know that nothing, the budget has been submitted, there's a final budget passed and it is, it is there.
I don't think we'll have specifics. I know there's a motion on the table, but I don't think we'll have specifics for you in two weeks. Is there a date that you think would be ready, Dwayne? When do you? We will meet, and I appreciate your interest. We will meet regularly to talk about what direction we go. But we're just new enough that, and there's so many pieces to this, that we don't have our side even on the number one place that we would buy or have donated. That work has, is yet to be done. And so to create a budget and say it'd be expended with this person or something along that line, two weeks won't, I, maybe, but I don't think we could bring you something more than.
The part that I'm confused about, Commissioner, is you just asked again, what, is there a date when he would be ready? And that's, and I don't understand what, ready with what, what is the request that you'd like to see? That we hand you the sheet of paper showing the budget? Because I'm trying to, I'm just trying to express, I guess I'm not communicating very well, trying to express.
Let me, let me answer the question.
Okay.
I, I've got the budget in my mind now, I can guess what it looks like. There's two line items on the expense side.
Okay. So that's what?
So I guess what I would like to see is ideas where you think you'll spend the money in the future. Other line items? Ideas of how you'll spend that money in the future. Just, you've got great minds.
So, okay.
Yeah, just. Ideas where you think you'll be spending that money?
Ideas will be promoted for sure. Specifics, maybe.
Exactly. And they would just be ideas. We certainly couldn't hold anybody to specifics. And so my, my thought was is even a conference call amongst the board members that say, hey, listen, these are just some of our ideas, where, some of our ideas where we think that we might spend that money in the future. And then those things could be then published on a, on a page in the county or somewhere else so that the rest of the citizens could say, hey, listen, these are some of the ideas that our new park district, this is some of the things that'll be moving forward. I think it helps with communication with them. And so even if it were, even if it were a month away on the 19th of December, and I don't want to create any undue burden on, because you guys have already given your time and a lot of emotion and energy on this already, I just would like to see, there's a lot of talent that was sitting at the table and those ideas, because I think everyone sitting at the table has some different ideas. And so potentially, these are some of the ideas that could be shared or the money could be spent on in the future. Whether that's just only the acquisition of land, whether that's sprinkler parts or cutting of grass or just some ideas of how parks, playground equipment, bowery. Now, I'm just, I'm making up things now, but things that I see in parks.
Well.
Let me, let me interject really quickly. So I think, Mr. Hanson, what I'm kind of hearing also is there's a difference of opinion on the timeline of how this has to roll out. If, if we were to table this for several weeks, it would give us a little, a little bit more time, I believe, to really line that out. If you could pass a budget and legally it wouldn't meet muster, would that alleviate your concern with passing the tax rate today or on the 19th? And then that would allow your body to pass it at the first of the year?
At the first of the year.
Yes, sir. If we could alleviate that and get clarity on that, would, would that help your timeline a little bit and not be such a, because what I feel like is we are pressed. So I have zero clarity on passing a tax rate that is not linked to a budget. That budget doesn't have any clarity to it. It doesn't even have, in the formal sense of a fixed operational cost that you expect to continue moving the, excuse me, the district forward. Some potential projects in the next, you know, three to five years, a projected cost for engineering and those type of things, to review land and those, you know, just a very simple budget because your timeline is so compressed. So that would be my first question is if we could get some clarity on whether or not we have to have that budget, excuse me, we know we have to have the budget, if we have to have the tax rate adopted before the end of the year. And then second, specific to the budget, very hard for us, I should say for us, I should say for me, but usually as a commission, it's extremely difficult for us to do a tax increase or set a tax rate where we don't know where those expenditures are really going, where, what they're assigned to. So that is some of the, I think that, I think what you're hearing from Commissioner Harvey is some of the concern, even if we had, our group is looking at three projects over the course of the next year, we'll choose from these three projects, but on average, each project should be, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And here's our operating capital that we presently have to have every single year. Here's our estimated engineering cost is seventy-five thousand a year based upon historical from the other district. Those would make, that clarity on that budget would make it much easier for, at least for me, to set a tax rate. But if we don't have to, because we've got a little more clarity on the process moving forward, that we can make some of those decisions.
Let me serve this up, and I would love a second on my motion eventually if we can get him to there, but we're asked through our budget process now from all the different county departments to put projections on what we see in year one, two, three, four and five with their potential revenues or the expense items that we see coming through. And I realize that you have no idea, because this is brand new, what you see those expenses will be. But I, I think the, I think that your current district members have the ability and the creativity to create some ideas.
So do I.
And if, all I'm asking for is just a little list of something, but before, a date that would work for you. I want, and I want it as part of the public record, I am a yes vote for this. I am a yes vote for this. I just would like a little more detail before I put the stamp.
I think that's what we heard last night from the public as well, that they want more detail on what we're looking at. So just a couple of things of clarification. First of all, the, the tax law, what happens if we don't pass a tax rate before December 31st? Is it?
I would rather not wait until December 31st.
Me, so if we, if we bring, so if we bring this back to you in a month and have those line items, we.
Just some ideas, some thoughts.
Some more consideration, yeah.
If I forget this thing into two things, one is a budget that is really an important part of this. The other thing is that you, you know, legal counsel has advised that he's looked at this. We need to get with the State Tax Commission. We currently understand the way the laws have been. And there's this new law that's engaged on January 1. Have we dealt with that? No. I tax based on whatever existed on January 1 as an entity and the budget that was there. And therefore, everything is geared around that January 1st date. That's the way we have been practicing for years and up to now. And I'd like, if you don't mind, with Roger, we'll get with the State Tax Commission and find out what the landscape really looks like. If their advice is blurry, gray, then we'll bring that back to you. But if it's black and white, we'll bring it back also. And if it is black and white, and if it is that, based on my thought, if it's there on January 1, I will create a tax rate, well, Roger will create a tax rate for it and I'll collect on it next year. If it has to be done based on this scenario, then if I can encourage you to maybe consider passing it if you want this to continue in December, in one of your, you know, commission meetings.
I think that will, that will create clarity. I think that we're looking for.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah. I think, it's a bifurcated issue. The one is the requirement.
The legal clarity of.
Correct, yes.
Does it have to be done in December just to avoid all the grayness?
I don't like gray. I don't like gray either. That's why I'm okay with doing it in, either now or in December. I just like the idea of having additional clarity and additional thoughts being published. And if they're just thoughts, it doesn't mean they're commitments. These are just ideas that this board has, these are just ideas where the money will be spent in the future. And I think, for me, the reason I wanted to possibly postpone it is only to put a deadline on the board so that they can just, it can just be communicated to the public. Because you heard from a few last night, but I want it, I want to, I want to create more trust in that board moving forward. And that would just be communicated. And we, as a county, I'll do my part to help that process with communication as well in our part, because I want you to be successful. If that makes any sense.
I think from my perspective, and I believe from the commission, there's a tremendous amount of support for moving the district forward. We just need to be on a firm foundation to make this, this decision. And I, and I believe what Mr. Bond talked about, getting the clarity for that, what Commissioner Harvey's talked a little bit about, getting the clarity a little bit on the budget, even if it's an estimate or future possible.
Or ideas that we have.
Yeah, would, would be extremely beneficial.
We've got a good group, we'll bring, we can do that.
I would just, I'd like to amend my motion to use a specific date. I said one or the other. Is the 12th or the 19th or one of those days better for you or the group that you know of just shooting from the hip?
I'd say the 12th.
The 12th would, or the.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll get it.
The 12th. The 12th would be okay? Then I'll amend my motion to make it the 12th of December, that we table this till the 12th of December, then bring this back for a vote.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Bond, will the 12th give you adequate time to work with the state?
We don't like to go to the state if you're going to make a decision before the end of the year. That's only if you decide to wait till after the end of the year. It's pretty cut and dry if you make the decision in the end of year 27.
That, that may or may not happen. Well, the question is, is will you have time to get with the state and get clarity on the timeline requirements on whether or not that, okay, thank you.
We'll bring that back to you.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second and you for further discussion.
I think it's, you know, I mean, that, that's the challenge. I think the commission shows a little hesitation, right? They don't want, they don't want to be in the middle of a park district's business. And that makes sense. And frankly, I think these guys don't want us in the middle of their business. They'd love to be able to pass their tax rate and move on. But we're in this weird spot. You know, they don't, they don't want to be here begging us any more than we want to be doing it for them. We're in a weird spot and, and I would just, I guess clarity on that issue is helpful to me as well because I, I'm telling you, from what I'm hearing, it scares me to go into the first of next year. And I, and I don't, I don't want to put that, that at risk. So as long as the motion is that we take it up in, on the 13th or on the 12th and, and make a decision that day, I'm happy to do that.
Mr. Hanson, if legal comes back and if Mr. Bond comes back and Mr. Brunker come back and say, there is no legal requirement, there is no negatives to your budget or the tax collection process for you to wait till the first of the year, then you, through your process and your board can make those decisions.
We would just wait on that and pass that ourselves.
I, I agree with Commissioner Gibson that, I mean, if you don't need to be here, then you just drive it forward. And so that's the clarity I think initially we're looking for. And then if you feel that time is still important for you to come back, then you bring the budget information that will alleviate any questions and our concerns and we'll look at it again on the 12th. Be happy to do that.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Brunker?
Just a quick, I think you can verify this, even if we do wait till the first of the year, the board still has to come before the county and explain what they're doing. And the county has to take public confidence. And the county has to take public comment, a public hearing that you do. Am I correct on that?
That is correct. There is a new, another new statute that goes into effect on January 1st that would require a representative from the board to come to a county commission meeting and just explain that they're raising the taxes, how much they're raising the taxes, and you would have to take public comment on that issue. But then they would have the authority to go back in their own meeting and approve the tax increase.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brunker. That's a good piece of information. Commissioners, any other questions? We have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second on the floor to at this point, table this until the 12th of December. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? It passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and all the tremendous.
Thanks, Dwayne. Please.
Now it's time to set aside for a public comment. Is there anyone here that is attending today that would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing no takers, I'm open for a motion to adjourn. Moved, moved. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.